We're ready to begin private city council meeting Tuesday, April 1, 2014. Ask that you stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance and also for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Oh gracious God, we come as unglad as we know how, Lord. First, we want to say thank you for being so good to each and every one of us. Thank you for life, health, and strength. Thank you for food, clothing, and shelter. We pray now, oh Lord, that you'll be with us as we discuss the business of the city. And we pray, oh Lord, you give us courage, give us strength, and give us integrity and honesty in dealing with these matters. Now be with those who are less fortunate than we are, oh Lord. We're not selfish in our prayers. There are many who are sick and shut in, and many who are breed at this time. Be with them and comfort them, and be with our fighting men and women, oh Lord, all around this world. We thank you, oh Lord, that when this night is over, you allow us to ride safely to our destination. We will be ever so grateful. We give you the glory, we give you the honor, and we give you the praise. In your name we pray. Amen. Madam Clerk, we call to roll, please.
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Starnes.
Here.
Counselor Chambliss.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Boone.
Here.
Call this meeting to order. Character trait of a mind is creativity, approaching the need, a task, or an idea from a new perspective. At this time, we have approval minutes from city council meeting March 18th. Have a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Be in a discussion on those minutes. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and those minutes are approved. At this time, we have comments from persons present regarding tonight's agenda, any item on tonight's agenda. Any item on this agenda, please come forth. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, sir. I'm Mike. Uh, may I appoint a privilege? I'd like to ask Counselor Brown to come down, and for our Art Guild President, Sherry George, and Sarita Gish to come up. Ms. George is going to talk about the Third Annual Art Guild Soup Cook-Off fundraiser that they did benefiting Otoga County, Otoga Interfaith Care Center. Counselor Brown is also the director of AICC, and so, this time.
On behalf of the Otoga Art Guild and its Art with a Heart event, I would like at this time to present a check in the amount of $419 to Councilwoman Denise Brown for the Otoga Interfaith Care Center. This is a fun event for us each year, and we're so glad that we have the opportunity to do something for our community. I'd also like to thank our Art Guild volunteers, in particular, recognized Sarita Gish, who donated lots of pottery that we sold for this event, and also thank the restaurants that helped us out, Chappie's, Chick-fil-A, Sugar Bees, and Longhorn. And I'd also like to thank the City of Prattville, the mayor, councilman, and particularly the cultural arts office and special events office for their support. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Great. (applause)
Well, I'd like to say thank you to the Art Guild, and you know, that's one of the part of our quality of life programs, and I did go by during the soup cook-off, and where this year I didn't purchase a, one of the bowls, but I do have one sitting on my desk, and it's for your creative, and hopefully next year when this comes back around, we can make this even a bigger and better thing. But while we're talking about arts and so forth, I'd like to thank and say congratulations to Barbara Simpson, Kelly Cook, and the various departments that helped get our Fountain City Arts Festival ready, which it took a lot behind the scenes to get going, parks and recs, urban management, facilities management, a lot of volunteers, but I believe that it was a great event, and I think this year was the ninth year for this, and challenging as always, because here in the South, you don't ever know what the weather's going to provide you, but the good Lord did look out for us and was able to have this event, and I think it was a good one. I'd like to mention also that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and also Autism Awareness Month. Been proclamations proclaiming for both of those, and so anyway, I think there's some good areas to promote here in the City of Prattville. But another one is tomorrow is National Walking Day, and I hope you'll join me taking the walk to promote health and wellness in our great city. It's, I don't know, during some of the Christmas activities that we've had, some of the holiday activities we've had, I know I have put on a pound or two, so I need to get out there and start doing some walking. Other, some of us were probably doing a lot of walking, a lot of talking in various arenas over the last several months there, so some of us have put on some weight, and some of us have lost some weight. But if anybody can, I will be out doing some walking tomorrow also. But another event we have coming up is a girls softball opening day, and Saturday, April 5th, at 9:00 a.m. at Newton Park. Hope everybody will join me there as we're kicking off their season. Historic walking tours beginning this Saturday and run every Saturday through the month. Please join us at 10:00 a.m. at Pratoga Museum and Welcome Center to learn about our history. These walking tours are sponsored by Alabama Tourism, and we appreciate them, including Prattville. Moving on to our business for tonight, counselors like to briefly touch on agenda item number two, is to award the bid in the paving projects in the Hearthstone and Pendlebrook subdivisions. Ask that you move forward on this item. It's been a long time coming. I want to thank Joel Duke, who is, and Robbie Anderson for working on this basically behind the scenes to get this, these paving projects up to this point, and with your vote and support, they can move forward on those. In closing, I'd like to, I hope you all have had time to review the audits as I have. I want to thank Jackson Thornton for the thorough job that they've done, as well as the comprehensive assessment and comments provided to this body at the last meeting. I want to thank, I want to thank this council and city employees for their hard work and continual dedication to this city. One other debt of gratitude is owed, I believe, to the citizens of Prattville, our partners of Prattville, because they have truly been partners with us throughout this process of improving the city's financial footprint, and I think these reports definitely shows that. That said, Mr. President, that's completion of my report.
Thank you, Mayor. Does any council member have any questions or comments for the mayor? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, before we go into our agenda, I note that Pastor Thaley Dickinson is in the audience. He did call me yesterday to inform me that he would be having a youth mentoring group. Praval Bay's Youth Mentoring, if you will stand and be recognized for coming down to let the youth see how city business is conducted. Good to hear you are.[510.12][510.12](applause) At this time, we have a report on council and special committees. Counselor Striplin.
No, sir.
Counselor Brown.
No, sir.
Counselor Starnes.
No, sir.
Counselor Chambliss.
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles.
No, sir.
Counselor Boone.
No, sir.
We go into our agenda. First item is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various weed laws to be a public nuisance and order an abatement for Title 11, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama. Counselor Chambliss, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes and other vermin, and may cause the further spread of weeds, may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property, and may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas Section 1167-1 of the Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, permits the city council of the City of Prattville to declare an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds to be a public nuisance. And whereas the Prattville Police Department has inspected the properties at the following addresses and determined the existence of an abundance and overgrown grass and weeds, 11 Radburn Way, 1244 Wright Street, 433 Bedford Terrace, 655 Thomas Avenue, 121 Terry Lane, 134 Terry Lane, 103 Amanda Lane, 302 Shega Boulevard, 329 Summer Hill Road, 279 Gardner Road, and vacant retention pond on Trolley Road. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville declares the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at the above listed address to be a public nuisance, and the owners of said property, as they appear in the records of the Otoga County or Elmore County Revenue Commissioners, are ordered to abate the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds, and the owners of said property are ordered to appear before the city council of the City of Prattville at a public hearing at 6 o'clock p.m. on May the 6th, 2014, in Prattville City Hall. Notice of such hearing and a copy of this resolution shall be sent by certified mail to owners of said property. So moved, Mr. President.
You have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this resolution. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this resolution passes. Item number two is a resolution to award bid number 014-004 to Wiregrass Construction Company Incorporated for roadway improvements in the Hearthstone and Pendlebrook subdivision at a total cost not to exceed $206,943. Counselor Brown, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville is in need of roadway improvements consisting of final wearing layer of asphalt in the Hearthstone and Pendlebrook subdivisions, and whereas five bids were left for the engineering department for said improvements. And whereas three bids were received, and Wiregrass Construction Company Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder, with a cost of $206,943. And whereas said improvements are a budgeted expense, now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number 14-004 in the amount of $206,943 to Wiregrass Construction Company Incorporated for roadway improvements to the Hearthstone and Pendlebrook subdivisions, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2014 budget line items Pendlebrook Subdivision and Engineering Department slash capital outlay. Mr. President, I so move.
You have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this item passes. Item number three is to release funds for the purchase of 1/2014 John Deere 5115M utility tractor from SNEED Ag Supply and Services through state contract number T 222 for the urban management department at a cost not to exceed $51,913. Counselor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville is in need of purchasing 1/2014 John Deere 5115M utility tractor for the urban management department, and whereas said tractor is available through state contract number T 222 from SNEED Ag Supply and Services at a cost not to exceed $51,913. And whereas said tractor is a budgeted expense for the urban management department. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that said funds in an amount not to exceed $51,913 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to SNEED Ag Supply and Services, and funds are approved and appropriated from FY 2014 budget line item Urban Management Department slash capital outlay. So moved, Mr. President.
You have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favors signify by raising your right hand, this item passes. Item number four is a resolution to reappoint F.J. McCready to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. Counselor Bowles, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas a vacancy occurs, currently exists on the Board of Zoning Adjustments due to the term expiration of F.J. McCready on April 30th, 2012, and whereas it is the desire of the City of Prattville City Council to fill the vacancy to ensure the contingency of the board operation, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that F.J. McCready is hereby reappointed to fill the vacant effective immediately, and said term will expire on April 30th, 2015, or until his successor is duly qualified and appointed. I so move.
You have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this item passes. Item number five is a resolution to appoint the fire chief and police chief. Counselor Starnes, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas in Resolution Book 2013, page 008, on January 15th, 2013, department heads were appointed until September 30th, 2013, or till their successors were duly qualified and appointed. And whereas it's time for the city council to reconsider these appointments, now therefore be resolved that the following individuals are hereby appointed as head of department appearing opposite their name until September 30th, 2014, or until their successors are duly qualified and appointed. Fire Department, Terry D. Brown, pay grade 107-05. Police Department, Mark C. Thompson, pay grade 208-01. Be further resolved that the salaries for said positions are approved in accordance with pay plans adopted by the Prattville City Council. So moved, Mr. President.
You have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second. Be in a discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this item passes. Item number six is a resolution to appoint Louis C. Colley as municipal court judge. Counselor Striplin, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas Louis C. Colley was appointed as municipal court judge, municipal court department head in Resolution Book 2006-A, page 51, on November 21st, 2006. And whereas in Resolution Book 2008-A, page 45, on October 21st, 2008, Louis C. Colley was reappointed as municipal court judge, municipal court department head. And whereas Section 12-14-30 of the Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, provides that the term of the office for municipal court judge shall be two years, and shall continue until his successor has been appointed and qualified. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that Louis C. Colley is hereby reappointed as municipal court judge, municipal court department head of the City of Prattville, and shall carry out the duties and responsibilities of said office at an annual salary of $23,000. Said appointment shall be for a period of two years, and shall continue until his successor shall be duly appointed and qualified. So moved, Mr. President.
You have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this item. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and this item passes. Item number eight, item number seven, to set a public hearing to rezon property located at 2578 Cobb Ford Road from FAR to B2. Counselor Chambliss, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the estate of Marjorie Cobb and Dorothy Jones is the owner of the property described in attachment A and shown in attachment B, and whereas the property to be rezoned is located inside the city limits at 2578 Cobb Ford Road, and whereas the petitioner wishes to rezon the property from FAR Forest Agriculture Recreation to B2 General Business, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed rezoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on March 20th, 2014, and whereas the City of Prattville Planning Commission did recommend the rezoning of said property be amended as described in attachment A and attachment B from FAR Forest Agriculture Recreation to B2 General Business. There, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that a public hearing is set for May 6th, 2014, at 6 o'clock p.m. in the council chambers at City Hall. So moved.
You have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? We'll be in a discussion on this resolution. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and the resolution is adopted. Counselor, will you read the ordinance part, please?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to the requirements of Title 115277, Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, notice is hereby giving, given that the, by the city council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that at the regular meeting of said city council on the first day of April 2014 at Prattville City Hall, 101 West Main Street, Prattville, Alabama, the following proposed ordinance was introduced. Ordinance, bid ordained by the city council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows: that the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama, adopted on February 10th, 1950, subsequently amended from time to time, and the zoning map adopted on the first day of May, 1987, is hereby amended to reclassify the property described in attachment A and displayed in attachment B from FAR Forest Agriculture and Recreation to B2 General Business. And that this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in The Prattville Progress, a newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville, and that the city council of the City of Prattville shall at its public hearing on the sixth day of May, 2014, at 6 o'clock p.m., consider said proposed ordinance, and that at such time and place, all persons who desire shall have an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such ordinance. All other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville not herein specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect. The amendments herein contained were considered and approved by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on March 20th, 2014. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. So moved.
You have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This item will be held, a public hearing will be held on May the 6th, 2014, at 6:00 p.m. Item number eight is a resolution to set a public hearing to rezon property located at County Road 4 at Buena Vista Boulevard from R 3 to R 5. Counselor Boone, will you read it, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the Oaks of Buena Vista LLC is the owner of the property described in attachment A and shown in attachment B, and whereas the property to be rezoned is located inside the city limits off County Road 4 at Buena Vista Boulevard, and whereas the petitioner wishes to rezon the property from R 3, single-family residential, to R 5, patio garden homes, and whereas a public hearing on the proposed rezoning was held by the Prattville Planning Commission on March 20th, 2014, and whereas the City of Prattville Planning Commission did recommend the rezoning of said property be amended as described in attachment A and attachment B from R 3, single-family residential, to R 5, patio garden homes. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Prattville that a public hearing is set for May 6th, 2014, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers at City Hall. So moved, Mr. President.
You have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a second. We'll be in a discussion on this resolution.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to make it clear, I know the council is clear from reading this, but I had some calls from the public, and I just kind of wanted to let this be known from the dais, that this does not affect the historical home Buena Vista, this is simply the neighborhood Buena Vista Oaks which sits beside it on County Road 4. So it's not affecting the old home property at all.
Thank you, Counselor Boone. Be in a further discussion on this resolution. All in favor signify by raising your right hand, and the resolution is adopted. We read the ordinance portion, ma'am.
Ordinance. Pursuant to the requirement of Title 115277, Code of Alabama 1975, as amended, notice is hereby given by the city council of the City of Prattville, Alabama, that at the regular meeting of said city council on the first day of April 2014 at Prattville City Hall, 101 West Main Street, Prattville, Alabama, the following proposed ordinance was introduced. Ordinance, bid ordained by the city council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows: that the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama, adopted on February 10th, 1950, subsequently amended from time to time, and the zoning map adopted on the first day of May, 1987, is hereby amended to reclassify the property described in attachment A and displayed in attachment B from R 3, single-family residential, to R 5, patio garden homes. And that this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in The Prattville Progress, a newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville. And that the city council of the City of Prattville shall at its public hearing on the sixth day of May, 2014, at 6:00 p.m., consider said proposed ordinance, and that at such a time and place, all persons who desire shall have an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such an ordinance. All other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville not herein specifically amended shall remain in full force and effect. The amendments herein contained were considered and approved by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on March 20th, 2014. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law.
You have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
We have a second. This item also will be the subject of a public hearing on May the 6th, 2014, at 6:00 p.m. That exhausts our agenda for tonight. At this time, anyone in the audience who would like to make comments concerning any item, please come to the podium at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on any item, please come forth, raise your hand, and be recognized. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Linda Skoll. I've come before y'all tonight to talk to y'all about ordinance 63. It deals with the fence around a pool, a five-foot fence. This ordinance was adopted in 1967. That was long before above-ground pools were available. Sorry, I'm nervous. Since then, above-ground pools are very available. I'm asking y'all to please consider amending this, saying that over a certain footage does not have to have the five-foot fence around it. I know the reason for the fence is to keep children and pets from falling in it and drowning. I agree. But a pool that is this high, no one's going to be able to fall into. I have pictures of my pool that I'll gladly share with y'all. I do need it back because I'm having to go to court about it tomorrow. Because I have a neighbor who has used city ordinances to harass me for the last six years. This is the only one that's been able to stick because Carl Wilson would come out after sending me the letter. I'd call him, he'd come out, and he'd say, "Well, that doesn't really qualify." Well, I called him on this. He looked at it, and he's the one that told me that it was an old ordinance, and it was spraying ground pools. But my neighbor keeps complaining about it, and y'all know, after so many complaints, it has to go to court. I'm asking y'all to please reconsider this. It's, I'm not asking for you to endanger anyone, because I agree with the in-ground pools and waiting pools having to have a five-foot locked fence around it. But there are exceptions. And I would appreciate it if y'all would consider it, because I know this neighbor will continue to harass me on this issue. And I know it's them, because behind me is graveyard, and in front of me is a school, a rental property on the south side, which changes continuously. And so, I know who is doing it. I know, they cannot divulge the name, but in this case, there's no doubt about who is doing the complaining. So would y'all please reconsider this? And if you want to see the pictures, I'll gladly pass them.
You may pass them now, ma'am. We'll pass them back to the clerk, and she'll get them back to you.
Now, one picture is me standing on the platform beside the pool. The other picture is me standing off of the platform. You will see the difference in the height.
Before you be seated, Ms. Skoll, does any council member have any comments or questions for Ms. Skoll? Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. Does anyone else like to address the council? Please raise your hand. No one else? Mayor, do you have any closing comments?
No.
Counselor Striplin.
No, sir.
Counselor Brown.
Yes, sir. There'll be a street committee meeting on Wednesday, April the 9th, at 3:00 p.m.
Counselor Starnes.
Yes, there'll be a building committee on April the 7th at 4:00.
Counselor Chambliss.
No, sir.
Counselor Bowles.
Yes, sir. There'll be a fire committee meeting on Thursday at 4:00 p.m.
Counselor Boone.
No, sir.
Again, I would like to thank everyone for coming down, especially you young people, to see some of the small business that we handle. If you just heard, there was a slew of committee meetings, so that kind of tells you that this is only part of it. We do a lot of meetings behind the scenes, proud to get in here to try to work things out before we get here. Glad to have you all, and hope you before we get here. Glad to have you all, and hope you'll continue to have interest in your city and some point serve your city. Also, I want to take this opportunity to thank all of you all who came out and participated in the annual North Highland Park Community Fund Day. It was a great event. We had proceeds left this year. We were able to make a five-hundred dollars contribution to the Otoga County Improvement Association after everything was done. Again, thank you all for coming. Thank you all employees for your service. We pray to the Lord we have a safe trip home. With that said, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
But it seemed real eager. When we put ten more items on here, do we have a second? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.